This is the planning board meeting for the City of New Brunswick for October 14th, 2014.
Roll call.
Claire Barber.
Yes.
Kevin Jones. Betsy Garlatti. David Tendrick.
Here.
Joe Katniss. Carly Neubauer.
Here.
Yosefa Rojas.
Here.
Annie Kaplan.
Here.
Linda Hunter.
Here.
Suzanne Ledgley.
Here.
Public announcement, open public meeting act.
Please be advised that notice of parties to the open public meetings act have been complied with and satisfied if the annual notice would be sufficient to the time, place, and conduct of all public meetings at the planning boards of the City of New Brunswick have been filed with the city clerk, placed on the appropriate voting board on the lobby of City Hall, 78 Fire Street in Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspapers of the City of New Brunswick, named it Homeless Tribune and Star Ledger.
Please stand personally to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
Appointment of substitute board attorney.
Madam Chair, Mr. Buca was our normal attorney. He has opted not to act as the attorney for the 17 Mine Street application to avoid creating the potential for an appeal issue related to an ethics complaint that was filed. Suggested that Mr. Howard Aitall, who is to my left, who is our zoning board attorney, substituted for Mr. Buca. Mr. Aitall is familiar with the city's zoning ordinance, the master plan, is familiar with all of the staff professionals, and we work well with him, so suggests making him the substitute attorney for Mr. Buca. Normally when we have substitute attorneys, it's more of a formal process, but given that this is in a rather complicated application, I would suggest that the board memorialize making Mr. Aitall the substitute counsel for this application by adopting a resolution. So it asks if a member of the board wanted to make a motion to accept him, to then take a vote on it.
I'll make a motion to accept Mr. Aitall as the board attorney, temporarily.
I second the motion.
Before I take roll call, I'll let the record reflect that Mr. Katniss is here in prison. Claire Barber?
Yes.
David Tendrick?
Yes.
Joe Katniss?
Yes.
Carly Neubauer?
Yes.
Yosefa Rojas?
Yes.
Annie Kaplan?
Yes.
Linda Hunter?
Yes.
Suzanne Ledgley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Minutes of the board September 9th, 2014 meeting.
Madam Chair, members of the board received copies of the September 9th meeting minutes in their packets. If they're acceptable, no changes to be made, a motion to approve will be in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Miss Pass.
All business. Construction Management Associates PB 2013-25, site plan and variance application for the construction of residential building located at 17 Mine Street, Lot 71, Lot 4.01, zoning district R-5A, and redevelopment area 2. And just before we go any further, I'd like to just give a small order of business of how things should happen tonight. We're going to do the application and the review, and then you have potentially a conflict. Would you like to?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I just wanted to let the record reflect, because I do know this was a discussion with reflect other folks. I am an employee of Rutgers University. I do not own property within 200 feet of this application. I do not, nor do I have, I believe, have any conflict or a financial interest in this application. I understand that Rutgers University owns property within 200 feet of this application. I don't think that affects my judgment based upon how far I am removed from that. I've neither been approached by anyone from the university. I'm unaware of the university having a stance on this application, but I wanted to declare that and defer to counsel if he believed that this posed a conflict.
Madam Chair, if I may. I have had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Kaplan regarding his employment. It's my opinion, I would advise the board that there is no direct conflict in this case which we call for mandatory recusal. I would point the board members out to the standard that's applied. One of the cases that I would suggest, the board members use as instructive is Marv Lo Mano versus Board of Commissioners of Township of Montclair, where the test for the conflict of a board member is spelled out. And I'll quote from the case itself, "The question will always be whether the circumstances could be reasonably reinterpreted to show that they had the likely capacity to tempt the official to depart from his sworn public duty," and that is in determining whether there is in fact a conflict. Madam Chair, as the board members are aware, Rutgers University is not an applicant. It's not the owner of the property, and therefore I would humbly suggest to the board that Mr. Kaplan does not have a direct conflict as he would have neither directly or indirectly the interest in the outcome of this case, and that he would otherwise not depart from his sworn public duty. The board members would certainly may wish to question Mr. Kaplan if that's in fact the case, and counsel or the objectors' counsel be present when they wish to put an objection on the record. Members of the public wish to put an objection on the record, certainly I recommend that that occur as well as a procedural matter.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Kaplan? Does counsel have any questions?
Yes, members of the board, Thomas F. Kelso on behalf of the applicant, Construction Management Associates. I did have an opportunity to speak to board counsel about this issue. Again, we recognize that there has been references to Rutgers University in this application process. We recognize that the regular board counsel, Mr. Buca, has recused himself as a result of the ethics complaint having been filed against him surrounding his participation at the board and his employment by Rutgers University. However, it's my client's position and our feeling, Rutgers University has nothing to do with this application. It's always been our position. We don't believe that anyone who has affiliation with Rutgers has any direct or indirect conflict with respect to this application simply because of their employment by the university. As indicated by your counsel, the property is owned by New Brunswick Development Corporation. My client is a contract purchaser of that property. The fact that there are properties that surround this site that Rutgers University owned shouldn't be very surprising considering this application is in the heart of the campus. And on that basis, we have no objection to Mr. Kaplan participating. As I said, once again, there is no conflict of interest as far as we're concerned with any affiliation from Rutgers because they're not a party to this application.
Thank you, Mr. Kelso. Does anyone else have any comment or questions or anything to wrap it up?
Madam Chair, Peter McArthur on behalf of, I represent four clients. When you know what I can do, I can go up here.
There's another microphone.
Is this mic on?
No, right here. Pete, right now.
Hello?
Yeah, you can do that. You can use that one.
Okay. Can everybody hear me? Okay. For the record, Peter McArthur from the firm of Azrak and Associates Esquire's. I represent the interest of Jennifer O'Neill, Alejandro Peroni, who live at 15 Mine Street. I also represent John Mills and David Drinkwater, who live next door at 13 Mine Street. And with all due respect, I wanted to point out to counsel as well as the board, a Supreme Court case which I was planning on getting in more detail with a little bit later on because I have some comments regarding Mr. Buca as I've discussed with your counsel. I believe the case that applies here is a Supreme Court case of Wiskowski versus Rizas. And that is spelled W-Y-Z-Y-K-O-W-S-K-I versus Rizas, R-I-Z-A-S, 132 New Jersey 509, 1993. And what that case talks about, ladies and gentlemen, is the, there's four types of situations that our Supreme Court requires disqualification. One is a direct pecuniary interest where an official votes on a matter benefiting the official's own property or affording a direct financial gain. Second one is the indirect pecuniary interest when an official votes on a matter that financially benefits one closely tied to the official, such as an employer or a family member. Thirdly, the direct personal interest when an official votes on a matter that benefits a blood relative or close friend in a non-financial way but a matter of great importance, as is the case, for example, the councilman's mother being in a nursing home subject to a zoning issue. It was the example they gave in that case. And finally, the indirect personal interest when an official votes on a matter in which an individual's judgment may be affected because of membership in some organization and a desire to help that organization further as policies. I believe that that case applies here in full due respect. I believe that there is a conflict of interest under this case because the board member is employed by Rutgers University, and there is seminary housing that will be part of this, and it will benefit Rutgers University. So respectfully, I lodge my objection.
Thank you.
Just in response, as a matter of reference, New Brunswick Theolage but Seminary is not affiliated with Rutgers University. Once again, I don't disagree with anything that Mr. McArthur has stated regarding this Supreme Court says are the standards, except for missing the factor that Rutgers is not a party to this application either directly or indirectly. That's the whole issue that has raised our consternation because Mr. Buca having an ethics complaint against Mr. Rizas is the reason why he's recusing himself. He obviously would defend himself in that Rutgers University is not a party to this application. So with all due respect, what the law cites is correct, this doesn't apply here.
Madam Chair, I would also second Mr. Kelso's observations and also point out to the board, the mere fact that the housing may benefit the seminary students, for instance, would not necessarily be a disqualification even if it was a deal with Rutgers University in some way, any more so than if a Rutgers student decided that they liked the housing and wanted to move in. The applicant is not Rutgers University, the owner of the property is not Rutgers University, therein is what the analysis should be, in determining whether there's a conflict between Mr. Kaplan's participation on behalf of his employer, so to speak. In this case, it's not even participating on behalf of his employer.
Would there be any, would any decision made by this board this evening be jeopardized by the fact that Mr. Kaplan would be participating in that decision?
Well, I can only address whether there would be, in my judgment, a reason for recusal under the law, and I don't see a reason for recusal as a matter of law.
That's satisfactory. Thank you.
Let me just say this. First of all, thank you everyone for the free legal advice. It's been very interesting. But I think, you know, while certainly I don't, I respectfully disagree, don't believe I have a conflict, I'm not a lawyer, and I would not want to put this board through a process that would potentially falter because of this. I trust the rest of the board to make whatever decision may be right. So with that, I will go ahead and recuse myself just to avoid any perception of conflict, even though I don't necessarily know if there is one, rather be safe than have folks argue about me in court. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll-
Thank you.
Sorry.
Mr. Kaplan. And I believe there may have been other jurisdictional issues to be raised by the applicant and/or the objector. We'd like to hear those at this point.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much. First of all, I wanted to make the board aware of a letter which was received by my client dated August 8th, 2014, from the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Natural and Historic Resources Historic Preservation Office, which reads as follows. Dear Mr. Mills and Ms. O'Neill-
First of all, I want to object to reading a letter into the record that I haven't had an opportunity to see for validity and also for a foundation for this letter.
Well, this was discussed with counsel this morning, with counsel for the board. Counsel is not an email indicating I was going to be making this objection.
Mr. McArthur, I was aware that you'd be making objections, and there were three procedural objections. I was not made aware that there was a letter that you'd be introducing, however. Maybe if you have copies of the letter and if you want to give that a copy to the board and a copy to Mr. Kelso, that would certainly be-
Well, I don't have to read the record, but however, I will tell you that in summary, what it says is that this-
Same objection.
This property is-
You can't read the letter.
Can I finish?
No, you can't finish if you're saying something that I don't think is appropriate. So all I'm suggesting is paraphrasing the letter or reading it, there's no distinction. I don't have a, I'm not objecting to his jurisdictional objection. He ought to state what it is and put it, the letter, then in context.
Madam Chair, normally what happens is if an objector came in and said, "Look, I have these letters from all my neighbors that they object to this project, or they're in support of this project," the board would not consider those letters. So based on that, the person would have to appear and have the opportunity for counsel to cross-examine. It'd be difficult to ask Mr. Kelso to cross-examine the letter, so I would respectfully suggest to the board that the contents of the letter can't be considered by the board.
Could you please just state the jurisdictional issue with-
Jurisdiction, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to do that. The jurisdictional, this property has been certified as eligible for inclusion into the state historic register. There are a number of properties along Mine Street that are included in this designation, and I respectfully state that the hearing should be stayed pending that final termination by the state historic preservation office.
In response, the property is privately owned, and whether or not a property is eligible for the state historic register is irrelevant if the property owner does not wish to have it placed on the historic register. So under these circumstances, obviously the owner is under a contract to sell to my client, who is a contract purchaser. There's no intent to put a property, assuming it is eligible, whether the letter says it is or not are potentially eligible, it's not a factor because the owner is not doing it.
My understanding, Madam Chair, is that it is not a question of whether or not the owner consents to this procedure. Fact is, it's been done.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure that the fact that a letter which cannot be considered by the board and a representation by counsel, that this property is now eligible for consideration by the historical registry, is something the board can consider on its face. Anyone, and I'm certainly not questioning counsel's veracity, I'm sure he's telling the truth, but certainly there are procedures that counsel's aware of in order to get that on the record. And that is more than, "Well, I have a letter that you can't look at that says that this is in fact the case that I have not shared with anyone." I would also suggest to the board that they may wish to inquire, "Who made this application?" Well, it certainly doesn't appear to be the property owner unless Mr. Kelso can state otherwise.
Well, I can state for a fact it was not the contract purchaser, nor was it the owner of the property. And I can also state, because I'm familiar with the law, that a property cannot be placed on the historic record without the consent of the owner of the property, which is not forthcoming. Now, again, I know what Mr. McArthur is doing. He wants to place his objection jurisdictionally on the record. He's got a right to do that. Certainly, it's an issue that if this matter is either approved or not approved, probably ends up somewhere in an appeal somewhere. So his jurisdictional objection is noted. I place my position on the record, and I think the board can proceed with the application knowing that at some point that'll get adjudicated somehow by somebody. But I'm comfortable moving forward with our application because I am familiar with what the law, Historic Preservation, says in regard to the right of the property owner.
Do any of the board members have any questions regarding this?
I would like to indicate that this letter was addressed to Ms. Jennifer O'Neill. She's willing to read this letter into the record.
Again, I might not object to it if you want to read it into the record.
With the advisement that I provided the board, which is that the board may not consider this letter, it's no different than a letter that a supporter of an application would give in lieu of actually showing up for the hearing and subjecting themselves to cross-examination. Certainly, the writer of the letter could have been brought in. Someone had to have written the letter.
Do you have any other jurisdictional arguments?
So might I take it then that Ms. O'Neill will not be allowed to read this letter into the record then? Is that the ruling of the board?
I'd love to hear it. It doesn't seem like it should be considered. Unless the author of the letter were here.
I know, but I mean, we can listen to it, but we don't have to consider it.
That's correct. Madam Chair, certainly the letter can be read into the record if counsel wishes to read it into the record. The board is limited by what it can consider.
You can have her read it.
You gonna swear, Randy?
If you're ready to write and state your name by your left hand, please.
Jennifer O'Neill, O apostrophe N-E-I-L-L.
And do you swear in conjunction this matter?
I do.
Thank you.
So as he mentioned, the letter's been addressed to Mr. Mills and Ms. O'Neill, so it's Jonathan Mills and me. And the letter starts, "This letter is in response to your request for a formal certification of eligibility for the Mine Street Historic District located in the city of New Brunswick, Middlesex County, New Jersey. Based on a review of available documentation, it is my opinion that the Mine Street Historic District is eligible to be listed in the New Jersey and National Register of Historic Places. The district contains many examples of 19th century architecture. The majority of the properties are residential. Prelimarily, the period of significance of the district appears to be circa 1760 through 1910. However, additional documentation discovered during the registration process may alter these dates. The district is significant under criterion C. Under criterion C, it is significant in the area of architecture. It includes good examples of Second Empire, Italianate, and Queen Anne, and as a distinguishable entity. The boundaries of the eligible historic district are Mine Street between College Avenue and Gildan Street, West Side, 5 through 65 Mine Street, East Side, 4 through 70 Mine Street. However, additional documentation discovered during the registration process may alter these boundaries. If you wish to pursue registration, please contact Caroline Scott of my staff at either 609-633-2396 or charles.scott@dep nj.gov. To help expedite our review and response, if additional consultation with the HPO is needed regarding the nomination of this property, please reference the HPO project number 14-2836 in any future calls, emails, or written correspondence. Thank you for your interest in New Jersey's irreplaceable historic resources. If you have any further questions, please contact Andrea Tingi at 609-984-0539 or andrea.tingi@dep.state nj.us. Sincerely, Daniel D. Saunders, Administrator and Deputy State Historic Preservation Officer."
Madam Chair, I may interrupt. I don't believe I can talk the date of the letter.
I'm sorry?
The date of the letter.
For the record, it is August 8th, 2014, counsel, and we're not in court. Administrative proceedings, generally the rules of evidence are relaxed, but I would note for the record that if we were in court, the public record exception, the hearsay rule would apply to this letter and would be admissible.
For the record, could you cite that exception?
It's the public record exception to the hearsay rule.
Mr. Howard, would you ask the board, I mean, do you want us to go through each jurisdictional issue, whether we believe we should still hear the application or not as they go, or are you going to-
Madam Chair, I believe it would be, I guess, to be most efficient to have all of the objections put on the record, and the board can decide based on those objections how to proceed.
Very well, then. I'll go on to my next one. My next objection is that respectfully, Madam Chair, this board does not have jurisdiction to hear this application because the use that the applicants are applying for is not permitted in this zone. And I support that with the following argument. Section 8 of your redevelopment plan requires the applicant to obtain any legally required zoning changes from the zoning board adjustment. Although Section 5D is in dog states that the requirements for the IN-1 industrial zone are supplemented and superseded by the additional requirement set forth in the redevelopment plan, Section 5D does not report to supplement or supersede the requirements for the RA-5 zone. Thus, because the redevelopment zone, or redevelopment plan, excuse me, is silent with respect to the RA-5 zone, it must be construed as an overlay zoning district. Now, your zoning ordinance in Section 17.02.020 defines overlay zone as a set of zoning requirements which are imposed in addition to those in the underlying text. The Redevelopment Act, and the citation there is NJSA 40 capital A colon 12 capital A hyphen 7C, provides that the redevelopment plan must contain an explicit amendment to the zoning district if it is to supersede applicable provisions of the development regulations of municipality. This conclusion is further supported by the redevelopment's characterization of its provisions as additional requirements. That's also in Section 5D. As such, as an overlay zoning district, the applicant is required to obtain a devariance from the board of adjustment because the site plan contemplates a use that is not permitted in the RA-5 zone, which is where this property is physically situated. And pursuant to NJSA 4055D-70, the zoning board of adjustment is vested with the exclusive authority and power to grant devariances. Thus, the zoning board, not this board respectfully, has exclusive jurisdiction over this application. Moreover, and in the alternative, even if the board finds that the RA-5 zone requirements were supplemented and superseded by the redevelopment plan, effectively rezoning this lot to IN-1, the Area 2, the Area 2 redevelopment plan does not permit privately owned apartment buildings in Area 2 because all apartment buildings in the IN-1 zone must be university-owned apartment and classroom buildings. And that's among other, I can provide citations if you wish, I have them here. Parenthetically, if there was a rezoning of that place, nothing in the redevelopment housing law that supersedes the MLU-L. This property in question was RA-5. If it was a rezoning, it's now IN-1 or Area 2. And Section 62.1 of the MLU-L states that notice has to be given as to the classification of the zone or change in zone boundaries, and that wasn't done. So I would like a ruling on this issue when the time is appropriate. If the chair would like, I'll move on to my next one and final one?
Please.
Okay. Very well. In this matter, we know that DEVCO, the New Jersey, or excuse me, New Brunswick Development Corporation formed a subsidiary, College Avenue Redevelopment Associates. Mr. Palladino is the president, and those development rights were assigned to Construction Management Associates, who are the applicant. I previously set forth the holding of the Wiskowski versus Rizas case in my prior comments. I will not repeat them here. They are applicable clearly to Mr. Buca's situation. Now, we, in light of some recent developments regarding the ethics complaint with Mr. Buca, we decided to do our own digging. And we found, and I think it's general knowledge, that Mr. Buca is the head coach of Rutgers' Women's Tennis Program. And back in the early part of this year, they accepted special donations from Chris Palladino and the New Jersey, excuse me, the New Brunswick Development Corporation. This was found on the Rutgers' Women's Tennis website entitled Rutgers Host 27th Annual Tennis Party. And again, it's back on January 27, 2014 at 5:08 PM. Donation was made while the application before this board was pending. This creates the appearance of indirect pecuniary interest as a Rutgers Tennis Program received a financial benefit from an entity which was in close relationship with the applicant. The fact that Mr. Buca has recused himself is not enough respectfully. It is our position that, under Supreme Court case law, which I discussed specifically with your counsel this morning, that this board has been irretrievably tainted by his continued representation of this board after this took place. I would also note that if you were to look at Mr. Buca's Facebook page, it reveals that he is friends with Chris Palladino and likes Devco. That's additional information for your consideration. Now, the Supreme Court case that I'm talking about, which supports my propositions, is known as Kane Properties versus the City of Hoboken. That's 214 New Jersey 199, 2013 case. Basically, in that case, a developer got use variance approval for high-rise apartments from the City of Hoboken zoning board. The objector was represented by an attorney by the name of Kais. After the approval, but before the appeal was taken by the objector, Mr. Kais became the attorney for Hoboken. He recused himself from the hearings in front of the city council because what had happened was, was that the objector had appealed the zoning board's action to the city council with the ordinance which was in place which allowed him to do that. So, he recused himself from those hearings, but he did issue a procedural memo and was there physically for the vote. He did not hear testimony. The council then overturned the zoning board of adjustment in favor of the applicant. The trial court affirmed the council, but the appellate division said that Kais tainted the action by the council and remanded to the council for another hearing. Now, at that point, an appeal was taken to the Supreme Court of our state. And the standards that they were grappling with in that hearing, because what they were doing was they were asking the Supreme Court to do something known as taking original jurisdiction. In other words, we want you, Supreme Court, to hear this matter anew because we don't trust anybody down in Hoboken. And the standards that this case indicates, you know, for the determination is, in the mind of a reasonable citizen, you know, citizens sitting out here in the audience that are fairly acquainted with the facts, would this scenario create an appearance of impropriety, improper influence, or would it cause them to have doubts about the impartiality of the tribunal? This standard remains applicable to municipal officials acting in quasi-judicial capacities, which is clearly the case here. The reason for this standard is so that the public does not lack confidence in the integrity of the process, you know, and its outcome. And what the Supreme Court held was that this attorney's incomplete refusal irretrievably tainted the action taken by council. And what they did was, they didn't take original jurisdiction, but they said that the taint is so bad, we don't want this to go back in front of the council, like the appellate division said. We want this to go to a trial court judge, P.S., a different one that heard the case originally, for a full hearing and supplement the record. Now, here, that attorney didn't take part in the proceedings that took place. Here, the donation took place early in the year, and there were at least two hearings that took place after that. My clients have, you know, told me when I first got involved in this that, you know, they thought that Mr. Buca, not the board now, but Mr. Buca, was siding with the applicant at times. And after reviewing some of the record, I have to agree, but that's not what you have to prove here. He was making procedural and substantive determinations here. His actions were clearly not ministerial in any sense. When I, my first appearance was here in May, and he wanted people to leave the council chamber so you guys could have a hearing then. There was another excerpt in March before my involvement in which there was an issue regarding Mr. Hughes. The applicant's planner was finishing up his testimony. And he was finished, Mr. Counsel said he was finished. And then, after that, Mr. Buca asked the Mr. Hughes questions as if, you know, he was his witness. In fact, you know, he said, "Okay, and so wouldn't you say, with the use being consistent with the redevelopment plan, with the density being consistent with the redevelopment plan, that this project promotes general welfare for the city of New Brunswick? Hughes, yes. Buca? And that would be a special reason to support the application in addition to the ones that you stated question about? Hughes, correct. Buca, okay, thanks." So, with all due respect, I think there's been an irretrievable taint, you know, even worse than what the Supreme Court saw on Kane Properties. There's a taint here. I think the Board needs to be reconstituted, again, respectfully, and the case needs to be started again from the beginning anew. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, if we can perhaps go through the three objections. Counsel, will we hear any other objections?
That's it at this time.
Madam Chair, the Board also wanted to inquire if there were any other members of the public that wanted to raise any objections at this time, jurisdictional objections?
Are there any members of the public who'd like to raise any jurisdictional issues?
Thank you very much. And my name is...
Raise your right hand, state your names, by your left hand, please.
Charles Cravill, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L.
And do you swear to the truth in this matter?
Yes, I do. Thank you, members of the Board. I'll be as quick as I can. I do believe that it would be inappropriate to proceed with the hearing. I do want to thank you, specifically Mr. Kaplan and Mr. Buca, for stepping aside. I think that was the right thing to do. But I do believe that there are several other conflicts of interest at work here that would jeopardize the right that we all have as citizens to be fair and impartial and unbiased fact-finding. Under the Fourteenth Amendment, you are required to exercise procedural due process. And as I said, since you're working on behalf of the state, there's a requirement that you must be impartial and unbiased. And I would suggest that Mr. Buca and Mr. Kaplan stepping aside is the correct thing, but it is not enough, and it is not resolve all of the problems. So, first, I believe that this Board is operating in a way where it has not been adequately constituted according to the law. Specifically, on the New Brunswick City website, it says RS 40,56A-1, that the Environmental Commission must have one member in common with the planning board. And I know that that's been a situation that has not been effectively resolved yet. I believe there may be one member who is perhaps technically in common, but for the record, I don't believe that Ms. Newbauer has been attending the Environmental Commission meetings. And I believe that the spirit of the law, the purpose of the law was so that there would be one member in common, so that that person, that individual, would report what was going on at the planning board to the Environmental Commission and vice versa. And I think that that element is effectively missing in this case and would constitute a reason that, again, the Board is not adequately constituted and would have to be reconstituted. I also understand that at least one member of the Board is involved in an organization where Mr. Kelso is in the leadership of the organization. I am referring to you, Madam Chair. I know that you are an elected Democratic Committee Woman for your neighborhood, and being a part of that organization means that you work under Mr. Tom Kelso, who is the Executive Director of that Board and appears on that website as the Executive Director of the committee. And I believe that that represents a conflict that also means that we should not move forward today. And I do also want to raise that while I have great respect for Mr. Ethel, the new attorney you have, I do believe that his employment also represents a conflict. It's my understanding, and I trust, so correct me if I'm inaccurate, that he works for a law firm where the state senator, Bob Smith, is one of the partners. Mr. Smith, being a Democrat, relies upon officials like Mr. Kelso to help him win office, win the elections. And the Democrat Party has supported him wholeheartedly for over a decade. And respectfully, I believe that that direct political connection between the applicant, the person representing the applicant, and the person who is the employer of your attorney represents a conflict that also should prevent this application from moving forward tonight. I do respect this Board, and the last thing I would want would be for this to have to get tied up in court. I think that you'd be better off either voting against the project and forcing a new application or at least voting to table it and reschedule after some of these issues can be addressed and the Board can be adequately constituted, such as to comply with that law, and some of these conflicts can be resolved. That is the extent of my objections for now.
Are there any other objections or requests? Please step forward.
Madam Chair, if the Chair could remind, I'm sure Mr. Knoll is aware, but it would be procedural objections that we're looking at that are jurisdictional in nature.
Do you understand that it's a jurisdictional argument? We're going to point out that...
Yes.
General public comment?
Yes. General public comment will be later.
Yes, it is.
Mr. Fitzgerald, can you raise your right hand, state your name, by your left hand, please?
Bruce Newling, N-E-W-L-I-N-G.
And do you swear to the truth in this matter?
I do. I would like to take this opportunity, Madam Chairman. Oh, one procedural matter here. Is it possible to turn on these microphones so that we can hear very clearly?
Here they are.
They're on?
They're on.
Those are on?
Yes.
Oh.
Will you use them, please?
It doesn't, okay. I just didn't hear the chaired person too clearly, that was the thing. But I can be heard, I take it.
This is a point on Slide 3 in form.
I would like to address the issue of Mr. Buca's involvement with this planning board. I was making the observation to one of the support staff here earlier that at earlier meetings of the planning board, I had gained the impression that he was the chairman. And because he was sitting right in the middle here, next to the chairman, rather than at the side in City Hall, and this to me was a very confusing situation. And I just think it created a tone and an atmosphere that was misleading.
What an objective. Is he raising a jurisdictional issue now, or is he wanting to rehash what happened at the prior application?
Well, I would...
What specifically is he objecting to tonight jurisdictional?
Yeah, what is, you have a specific new jurisdictional argument that was not raised?
No, I'm only addressing the issue of Mr. Buca's tainting because the council here was referring to the fact that Mr. Buca's participation earlier had tainted the proceedings. And I am simply adding my view that that is indeed the case, and I feel that the planning board did not get a proper perspective on this situation as a consequence of Mr. Buca's behavior in the past, and that therefore we're proceeding with a leaky boat, if you want to use that metaphor. That's all.
Okay. Thank you for your comment.
Raise your right hand, state your names, by your left hand, please.
Elizabeth Ciccone, C-I-C-C-O-N-E. I'd like to...
And do you swear to the truth in this matter?
I do.
Thank you.
I'd like to address the idea of the jurisdictional aspect of the certification of eligibility letter from the State Historic Preservation Office. The certification of eligibility letter enables people to apply to become state and national register-listed districts and buildings. In fact, in the federal level, it serves as almost equivalent to being on the national register. When you receive the certification of eligibility letter, you're entitled to a Section 106 review under the National Historic Preservation Act to determine whether the historic resources will be damaged by the project. In fact, there's also a segment of that legislation that deals with encroachment. And even if the property in question doesn't wind up within the district as declared, it could still constitute encroachment against the historic district. And I would suggest extreme encroachment because it's huge, it sticks out, it's not a part of the historical fabric. And indeed, the Federal Department of Environmental Protection and the Secretary of Interior do have jurisdiction to review this project, so I'm not sure that the city of New Brunswick really can vote on this at this point.
Sir, can you raise your right hand, state your names, by your left hand, please?
My name is Kevin O'Neill, capital O apostrophe capital N-E-I-L-L.
And do you swear to the truth in this matter?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. As I mentioned previously, in April, I am here out of concern for my daughter Jennifer and her family who live next door. Specifically, in terms of jurisdiction, I'd like to point out that in the April meeting, if you remember, I very extensively cited chapter and verses why this application should be before the board of adjustment because it is a use variance, not a bulk variance. And everything that's ever gone on, all these meetings have only addressed a bulk variance. And that, I think, reinforces the fact that I don't think Mr. Buca advised this Board properly that that should have been taken more seriously. If you look at the R-5A, the apartment's not allowed. If you look at Area 2 and the redevelopment, the apartment's not allowed. If you look in the IN-1, apartments are allowed only if owned by Rutgers University. And I've heard several of you say tonight, Rutgers has absolutely nothing to do with this. So, I really do think that you've been ill-advised to have proceeded as far as you have. That's a jurisdictional problem. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Does the Board have any questions for our attorney or are there the other attorneys?
We can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Do any of the Board members have any questions for our attorney?
Yeah, I've got a question. With regard to Ms. O'Neill's testimony, that was the testimony that was delivered in April, as he said, he did mention the fact that it was an RA-5 zone, and I looked at the RA-5 zone, looked at the overlays. According to where that, where this property does sit, it does not sit within that. So, is it within our jurisdiction to actually look at this? That's what I want to have clarified.
Mr. Henry, yes, I believe it does. The redevelopment plan includes, puts all of the redevelopment area into the IN-1 zone and then provides additional zoning guidance for those properties. So, by adopting the redevelopment plan, that brought this into the IN-1 zone.
And the IN-1 zone as we stated before should be Rutgers' properties. Is that correct? Is that restricted only to Rutgers' properties, or is that restricted to any sort of development?
No, the redevelopment plan adds additional permitted uses when it's done in a redevelopment project, and one of them is low and mid-rise housing.
Okay. Were some specifics to that, whether or not, as far as low and mid-rise restrictions on that? There was a height restriction?
Well, everything has height. Those are the bulk restrictions. But as to the use, the use of low and mid-rise housing is permitted in this area by the redevelopment plan.
Could that man repeat that? It can't be heard. It can't be heard. Could you turn your mic so we can hear you?
The redevelopment plan provides that the entire redevelopment area is in the IN-1 zone, and that the permitted uses in the redevelopment plan for this area include low and mid-rise housing.
Okay, so it's not restricted to university property only?
No.
Okay. So, are there any other... So any other members of the board have any comments or questions?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, my left, challenge that, or is that out of order?
No. Okay.
Madam Chair, did you want to go through those objections?
Yes, please.
One procedural objection, and one is I generally categorize it as based on the historical preservation designation of the adjacent properties. I would ask counsel for clarification, whose citing rule, I guess it would be federal Rule 803, which is the exception to hearsay for public records?
Yes.
Is that correct? Can you tell us how this is a public record? This letter, how is it maintained in the general public by this administrative agency or by the government, which is what it would have to be in order for this to be a public record and for the board to consider it?
Well, to answer your question, it's on State of New Jersey DEP letterhead. It is signed by Daniel D. Saunders, Administrator and Deputy State Historic Preservation Officer. You know, the document speaks for itself. Clearly, it's a public record. And this is not a situ, you know, sometimes, you know, when we're in court, we try to, you know, get documents into various things like the, you know, the business record exception and whatnot, but this is a public record. I, you know, my understanding of the law is that you don't need the custodian of the record to present it. And again, we're in, and listen, we can have this warrant, I can pass this around, you know, that's fine. I'm not hiding anything here, but the fact is, is that, you know, it speaks for itself.
Madam Chair, my advice to the board would be that under Rule 803, public record would be, include, for instance, the National Weather Service maintaining records of the weather over a period of time. The introduction of that record into, to the record, if you will, is what was contemplated by Rule 803. This is a purported to be a letter that was sent by a government agency to a private individual, but it's not maintained by a public agency. Appears to be a letter that was sent to a private individual, and we're essentially trying to go through the back door, we're trying to introduce it. Board can certainly take into consideration, give it what weight it may. As counsel is correct, the rules of evidence aren't relaxed here. Advice of the board would be that it's, with the numerous opportunities that would otherwise be afforded an applicant to cross-examine it with, that is certainly not something that is present here. So counsel is proffering this letter as a juris, as a letter to support his jurisdictional argument, that this board does not have jurisdiction. And I humbly propose to the board that the letter on its face does not say that this board fails to have jurisdiction, which would certainly change my analysis with how cautious the board ought to be in proceeding. We have no experts that have been proffered to support the proposition that the letter somehow stays in proceeding that this board may have. So with that in mind, I would ask the board to consider whether the first objection, and we can do it one by one at this point, I would ask the board to consider that, that the first objection based on the fact that adjacent properties, including this property, has now been considered for demarcation or notation as a historic property, and probably not using the Alton verbage, but...
I believe, and Mr. Knoll, if you can correct me, that, I believe what is being stated is that Mine Street, the one or two-block area there, has been deemed eligible as a historic district, that not that each individual property is eligible, but that combined a number of properties together could be eligible for historic designation. Is that correct?
That's correct. I would also note that if an open request were filed for this letter, it would have to be first.
Do we need to take a roll call vote on...
But Madam Chair, I thought we weren't even supposed to consider that, that letter. I mean, it was asked to be read, but we were asked not to consider it, so, over Mr. Kelso's objection, so I don't understand why, what the issue is as far as I...
It seems to be hedging, I know. The board does not have to consider that letter.
Well, we were told not to.
That's correct. My advice to the board is not to consider the letter. If the board wishes to consider the letter, give it the weight that it deserves, which is that it is an unauthenticated letter that does not, on its face even, address the issue of jurisdiction.
So by simply reading it, have we tainted ourselves?
No. It's a popular word today, but no, it's not a taint.
If I might just, again, on behalf of the applicant, state whether it's a public record or not a public record, whether what he has read or paraphrased is challengeable by date, there are several facts that matter with respect to the decision year of the day. If everything that was read in that letter was accurate, it does not have any impact on whether or not you have jurisdiction to hear this application. As your counsel stated, nothing that was read indicated that you don't have jurisdiction. I add to that the fact that the applicant, as the contract purchaser and the owner, will not apply for designation of the specific property. And that is the only criteria that matters with respect to whether a property in and of itself can be designated. Whether or not they're able to do an application to declare a district as a historic district is irrelevant, number one, as to whether this property will remain and something will be developed, or whether or not this board even has jurisdiction to hear this. They cannot control the jurisdiction of this board, and the letter does not say that.
Does the board, do we as members need to vote on this and decide whether we feel we should move forward on each issue? Do you want us to do it that way?
I would ask that you do it separately, one by one.
And do you want a roll call vote on each?
Yes. How do you want to do it, more, more motion? A motion to either proceed or not to proceed.
I'll make a motion that we take a vote on whether or not this is a jurisdictional issue that would prevent us from further action. Is that what you want?
I would clarify that to a motion to proceed or to not proceed.
A motion to proceed on the application. I'll make a motion to proceed on the application, as this is not a jurisdictional matter that would prevent us from doing so.
Second.
Clarissa Barber.
Yes.
Dave Fitz Henry.
Yes.
Joe Catenees.
Yes.
Carly Newvower.
Yes.
Josefa Rojas.
Yes.
Linda Hunter.
Yes.
Suzanne Ludwig.
Yes.
Madam Chair, it appears that the first jurisdictional issue has now been resolved. The second jurisdictional issue, which I believe was addressed briefly by the planner, I'm sorry, by the secretary, if I may address that issue. The issue itself is, just give me one moment, I'm sorry, my reading, my writing is not as good as it should be. The issue is one of whether this is improperly before the planning board, because there is in fact a use variance issue, that this use is not permitted in the zone. I believe that Mr. Patterson's put on the record that the use is not only permitted in the zone as a, as a use under the redevelopment plan, but also that the developer does not have to be the university, it can be any other entity. Is that correct?
The applicant does not need to be the university in order to be the, in order for it to be permitted use.
I believe that that's all that's required in terms of addressing the issue of whether there is in fact a use variance or not. A use variance certainly would put this before the zoning board adjustment, but it does not appear that there is anything, on the record at least, that would present itself as being a use variance issue. Counsel wants to chime in on that, Mr. Kelso?
I believe my client is the designated redeveloper. As designated redeveloper, they acquire rights. Those rights involve those that are set forth in that redevelopment plan. As contract purchaser with site control from the property owner, a designated redeveloper, they have a right to proceed as to what the plan identifies as a permitted use, which is a mid-rise building. And as, as Mr. Patterson has indicated, there is no, there, the identification in the plan of that enhanced use is, in fact, for the benefit of a designated redeveloper who's coming in to develop under a redevelopment plan. So I would prefer with that interpretation, which is why the application was submitted the way it was, which is a reason why the applicant went through the process of being designated as redevelopment.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we proceed with the application in light of the fact that the explanation provided by our counsel and our secretary is that the use is permitted under the redevelopment plan.
I second the motion.
Clarissa Barber.
Yes.
Dave Fitz Henry.
Yes.
Joe Catenees.
Yes.
Carly Newvower.
Yes.
Josefa Rojas.
Yes.
Linda Hunter.
Yes.
Suzanne Ludwig.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the third objection, and this was not only brought by counsel, but also by Mr. Cradville and Mr. Newling regarding, I'm going to generally categorize it as the taint that was brought about as a result of Mr. Buke's prior participation for this board. I think there's one point of clarification, if I can inquire of Mr. Kelso. My understanding, Mr. Kelso, is that we are beginning this application anew today?
Yes. It's the intention of the applicant to literally commence the application over again, while the applicant disagrees vehemently that there is any conflict whatsoever with regard to Mr. Buke's participation, or in fact, Mr. Kaplan's participation in this hearing because of an affiliation with Rutgers. It's, we recognize that there, with the ethics opinion that has been, I think, the ethics complaint that's been made against Mr. Buke, and the characterizations as to Mr. Buke's participation, which I will not further comment on, but I would sure love to, that we do not feel that the applicant should be put at risk as a result of those ancillary types of claims that we believe have no basis in fact, and that Rutgers affiliation, Devco's president making a contribution to Rutgers, and those types of ancillary types of claims have no place in this application, have nothing to do with the applicant standing before this board. And I'm, but my client ends up being a victim in that circumstance. If we were to proceed with a finishing of the prior application in which Mr. Buke by necessity participated in, we stand at risk in a situation we didn't create. So it's been my client's request and our request of the board that we commence this application all over again, with our witnesses presenting all of their testimony in detail, which is a practical matter would have happened in any case, because as you know, at the August meeting, there were changes that had been made to the plan that was going to require them to testify again anyway. By us proceeding anew with this application, with new counsel that the board has identified, the issues that have been raised by Mr. MacArthur and others, in our view, are no longer in this, in this case, there's no quote "taint" from Mr. Buke's participation if he's not participating in this application from its initiation. Again, that, without me making comments with regard to what, what the references were to what they thought Mr. Buke's prejudice was in this application, I would just comment that what Mr. Buke did in this application is not atypical for board attorneys. Receive clarification, ask questions in order to be able to supplement the record so they can create resolutions. And I find it offensive that they wish to reference that as some hidden agenda. But we want to protect ourselves, I clearly need to protect my client in order to proceed with an application that doesn't carry this perceived taint, and we're going to start over again.
Thank you. Is there a motion from the board?
Madam Chair, if I may, I'm sorry, if I may just put on the record also, counsel had cited Kane Properties versus City of Hoboken, and I'm going to date myself a little bit and maybe speak a little bit to my lack of taste in radio, and admit that I used to listen to Paul Harvey when I was younger, so I'm a fan of his expression, and now for the rest of the story. I think that the board needs to hear the rest of the story and what Kane stood for and why facts matter. Counsel has indicated that Kane involved, in general terms, a case where an attorney for an ejector before an application, before a board, ended up being appointed as the counsel for the governing body of that municipality at some point, and that he had participated, although peripherally, he had participated in advising counsel about the appeal of the approval of that application. Board approved the application, instead of going to court in that jurisdiction, you were allowed to appeal the decision of the board to the governing body. So counsel was entitled to listen to the application anew and make a determination as to whether they agreed with the board or they were going to overrule the board. So that's what happened here. Counsel advised the board, but it's not just benign piece of advice that they provided. He actually wrote the procedural guide for the board, for the counsel members to consider on what they should be looking for on the appeal, and how they should grant it. And further, after the counsel had decided that it was going to go ahead and appeal, or it was going to overturn the decision of the board, the attorney went ahead and did more work on behalf of counsel, instead of allowing the conflict counsel to handle it. So there was more than just a benign taint, if you will, there was an actual taint here based on his pervasive and continuing participation in the application. We have a distinction here, which is that the application, number one, and I wanted to clarify this, is beginning anew. So any advice that the board members may have received from Mr. Buke on an old application based on an old plan, is certainly something the board members would have an opportunity to ask new counsel about. That would be number one. Number two is, in order for there to be a taint, Mr. Buke would have to have participated not only in the application itself, but in the ultimate conclusion of the application, which never happened. The case that was cited before, which is Kane Properties, not only was the case adjudicated before, I believe it was the planning court, but it was again adjudicated before the governing body. And that attorney advised essentially the governing body through this conduct, although not directly, it was an indirect advice that he provided. So I would suggest to the board here that there are distinctions, factual distinctions, which are relevant here in making this case, Kane, not applicable. There is no taint here. Mr. Buke was present, I'm sure, I don't believe he is. Mr. Buke does not appear to be present here today, so if the record can reflect that. There would certainly be ongoing taint, if you will, if Mr. Buke provided or continues to provide from this point forward any advice to the board members. That would be taint, and that would necessitate going before another body to hear this application, but we don't have that here. So I would say that based on the case that was cited by counsel, there are factual distinctions which are relevant, and that those relevant facts are what distinguish this case from the holding in Kane and make it inapplicable. There is no taint from Mr. Buke's prior participation, this is a new application essentially, changed plans with a new attorney, and there was no final adjudication of the prior case. So I'd ask the board to consider that in determining that objection based on the prior taint.
So you're saying that the objection is, or, yeah, this is effectively moot, basically, because it's a new counsel and a new application?
And the fact that there is, there was no adjudication of that matter.
Right, right. We didn't conclude it, we're sitting before a brand new, totally brand new application with a new counsel.
Correct.
And the cited case law does not apply here?
Well, I would say that factually it does not apply here, that there are distinctions. Distinctions which are relevant to the point that they rendered this case in our...
Do I have a motion?
A motion that the, that the board...
A motion that the, that the board has not been tainted by presentation by Mr. Buke prior to this.
Second.
Clary Barber.
Yes.
Dave Fitz Henry.
Yes.
Joe Katniss.
Yes.
Carly Newbauer.
Yes.
Josefa Rojas.
Yes.
Linda Hunter.
Yes.
Suzanne Ledwig.
Yes.
Good. I believe Mr. Cradville also brought up the, an issue regarding Mr. Kelso's position as head of the, I guess, the local Democratic Party, Party Chair and Council President's involvement in the party itself. I'd refer back to Marlboro Manor versus Board of Commissioners of Township of Montclair. There's some language here, including some language by Supreme Court Justice Holmes that I find to be operative here. I may quote from this case, "Local governments would be seriously handicapped if every possible interest, no matter how remote and speculative, would serve as a disqualification of an official. If this were so, it would discourage capable men and women from holding public office. Of course, courts should scrutinize the circumstances with great care and should condemn anything which indicates a likelihood of corruption or favoritism. But in doing so, they must also be mindful that to abrogate municipal action at the suggestion that some remote and nebulous interest is present would be to unjustifiably deprive a municipality in many important instances of the services of its duly elected and appointed officials. The determinations of municipal officials should not be approached with a general feeling of suspicion, whereas Justice Holmes has said, quote, 'Universal distrust creates universal I bring that to the board's attention for a couple of reasons. First is that the fact that Mr. Kelso is head of an organization that you may belong to does not in and of itself disqualify you. The affiliation has to be more than just that you belong to the same organization. There has to be some sort of overt pressure. If you work for the employer that is now before you, that certainly would be a reason for you to recuse yourself. As my position with my law firm and my partner's position as the state senator may be a reason for disqualification if there is something more than just that, but that allegation in and of itself, without some specific fact beyond that, is insufficient to require your recusal or my recusal. I would humbly suggest to the board that that objection is without merit as a jurisdictional objection.
How can we deny Justice Holmes? Beautiful. I see that there is no conflict, and it suggests that then we vote accordingly.
Second.
Second.
Clary Barber.
Yes.
Dave Fitz Henry.
Yes, sir.
Joe Katniss.
Yes.
Carly Newbauer.
Yes.
Josefa Rojas.
Yes.
Linda Hunter.
Yes.
Suzanne Ledwig.
Yes.
Madam Chair, there's one final objection. I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Cradville brought up the, I wasn't sure of the facts, and I wanted to clarify this as well. Mr. Cradville had indicated that a member of this board must also be a member of the Environmental Commission. And if that's in fact not the case, then we have a problem. Is there a member of the board who is also a member of the Environmental Commission?
Yes.
Then there would be no, there would be no disqualification as the board's properly constituted.
Thank you. Do we need a motion on that as well?
No, you won't. That's a fact.
Okay. So all jurisdictional arguments have been covered?
It appears that all jurisdictional arguments have been addressed.
Respectfully, I do have another one in light of Mr. Kelso's recent comments about how he wishes to proceed tonight. My understanding was that this proceeding was noticed as a continued hearing and not a new hearing.
No, it was not.
I would have counsel review, review the notice then. I'm making that objection not only under the Open Public Meetings Act, but under Section 12 of the MOUL for the record.
Yes.
As this is an objection based on the notice, I'm looking at a copy of the notice, which is dated October the 2nd, on the Council on Bradshaw's letterhead, comprised of four paragraphs. I don't see any language here, and I'm reading very quickly, that this is a continued hearing. Counsel, can you point to the notice where it says that this is a continued hearing?
I don't have it in front of me, counsel.
Mr. Kelso, do you have a...
I have a copy of the legal notice that was in the newspaper. I have a copy of the letter that was out. It's exactly precisely the same notice that was sent out for the original application. It makes no reference whatsoever to a continuation of a hearing. Read it into the record if you'd like.
But I think it's already been introduced into the record as part of the application statute. Madam Chair, there's nothing, I don't see anything, unless counsel, you can point out something that says that this is a continuation of a hearing and how under the MOUL, the notice would have to specify that this is a continuation or a starting of a fresh application or a new application. I don't, I think it's a distinction without a difference here, that this is a notice that indicates that this is an application that'll be heard this evening.
Well, I would say to you that Paul Mark talks about substance of the notice, and I'm sure you're, everyone's, the label counsel in this room are familiar with that. I think the substance of a meeting is different, whether it's a continuation or a new meeting. I think that's axiomatic.
Again, we didn't call it a continuation. We refer to us applying to the planning board at this hearing for preliminary final site plan and variance approvals, et cetera. We'll apply.
Madam Chair, the notice speaks for itself. If there, if Mr. Kelso presents any testimony that is outside of the notice that would otherwise be required as part of the notice under the MOUL, that would certainly bring the chair's attention, but we should proceed on, based on the notice.
Thank you. Now, the rest of the meeting, we're going to hear the applicant's testimony in full, and then we're going to go to the public for comment. We're going to ask that witnesses within 200 feet of the property come forward first, and then all, everybody else after that. And again, tonight, we're, after 10:30, there's going to be no new testimony. So we can proceed in that order with the applicant's testimony, please.
Madam Chair, if I may interrupt one more time. I understand that January 1st, or sometime in January, during the first planning board meeting, professionals were sworn in. Since I wasn't present, if we can have the benefit of perhaps allowing me to swear the witnesses in, all of the professionals.
Can you take us to a minute break? Can, yes, please swear in.
Okay. Do you have one, two, three professionals present today?
Yes.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Juan Patterson.
I, Mark Segal.
I, Todd Fletcher.
You solemnly swear that I will provide testimony to the truthful testimony to the best of my knowledge.
I will provide truthful testimony to the best of my knowledge.
You solemnly swear that I will provide truthful testimony to the best of my knowledge.
You solemnly swear that I will provide truthful testimony to the best of my knowledge.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And members of the board are requesting a five-minute recess. Is that acceptable? Three minutes this way? So if you could just wait for a couple minutes, please.